Welcome, everybody. We're going to go ahead and start our pre-meeting as people file in. So we will run through our agenda, and I will go ahead and call the pre-meeting to order. So we will have a prayer led by Councilman Schreiber. And then I will mention before we start the meeting too, I did receive a text from Father Seacrest from St. Peter's Church that his father passed away, so he was asking for prayers. So for those of you that know Father Seacrest, please keep him in your prayers for his father. Item 4A, we have the Kevin Meinhardt Award, which I always look forward to every year. And we will have with us Bob, who was Kevin's brother, Sean nephew, and then Aura might be here, his niece, and we will have online Molly, his daughter, and Cindy, his wife. So they'll be joining us later as well. So we'll be doing the Kevin Meinhardt Award presentation to Mary Shans, and I have the plaque here. So look forward to that. Any questions about that? And thank you, Councilman Lester, for the nomination. Any questions? And item 5A, we have a public hearing bill, or Resolution 2238. Mr. Sanders.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This public hearing regards a special exception permit to an M1-zoned property where the applicant would like to put in an offload outdoor storage and operations facility for asphalt oil. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions? And item B, 2278, Mr. Sanders.
Thank you. This is a PUD plan amendment, basically changing the use of the facility to include gymnastics and other C1 uses, and also to approve the addition of 10 10 feet of elevation in the building. They're raising the building up to accommodate the use of gymnastics. Be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions? Okay, and going down to announcements, anything specific under there? We might take that as an opportunity to just mention Capitol Avenue. I have a couple of dates here, December 13th and 22nd, that people have an opportunity to get their calls into interested parties, so I can mention it if you want, or you could, Sunny, however you prefer, or...
Ryan, do you have the dates memorized more than I do?
Yeah, we got them. Isn't that right, the 13th and 22nd? Okay. Do you want me to say it, or you, or how do you prefer?
The less speaking I can do, the better.
Okay, got it. All right. Item 9, Lincoln University. We have Octavia with us this evening, so we'll have you. You could come to the podium later if you want to do your report from there. And I was glad to see you emceeing the Christmas parade as well, so maybe you can tell us a little bit about that, too. Okay. Item 11, consent agenda. Any questions? And bills introduced, we'll go through quickly. Number 82, Mr. Marash.
Yeah, this is a grant agreement with MoDOT for the airport, a project at the airport, basically just extends the time so we can get our paperwork completed.
Any questions? Number 83, Mr. Sanders.
I'm going to let Ms. Sinzy talk about the legacy district.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, this is for the Lafayette Street and Historic Foot area. This would be our first historic legacy district application. It is, the purpose of a historic legacy district is to identify historic areas that are no longer have built environments, no structures, no buildings, but are still historically relevant to the history of the city. And I can have a map in a little bit more of our presentation, but I can answer any questions if you have them at this time.
Any questions or comments? Okay, number 84, Mr. Moleman.
Thank you. This bill would approve an industrial development project for JCMG. Bonds approximately amount of $15,700,000. And a step-down 10-year real and property tax abatement program.
Any questions? All right, and number 85, Mr. Moleman.
Thank you. This ordinance would approve redevelopment plans for 611 Jefferson, 320 Miller Street, and 1226 Adams Street. There is a typo in the agenda that's marked as 1126 Adams. The correct address is 1226 Adams. These are redevelopment plans under Chapter 353 of the Missouri statutes.
Any questions? Okay, and bills pending, number 80, Mrs. Strope.
Thank you. So this is an amendment to the Personnel Policy Manual as far as the tuition reimbursement plan, and it allows the city to reimburse student loans so that the employees don't have to pay for their tuition and then get reimbursed. If they get student loans, then we can just reimburse directly to the student loan company.
Okay, any questions? Number 81, that one is Mr. Spalding.
Thank you. This is changing our personnel schedule to a Parks Resources Supervisor, Construction Inspector, from and removing the golf course superintendent and mechanic. So we're wanting to promote higher position, a couple of positions greater need within our maintenance department.
Any questions? All right, nothing on the informal, no resolutions. Something we could think about if council wants to is maybe under new business, if we want to mention anything about 408 Lafayette. I know Mr. Sanders sent out an email. There was some discussion at the last council meeting about asking for information as far as what that process might look like, or what council would want to do, not necessarily decisions, but other information they may still want. It's up to council. That may be a good spot for it, or maybe the next meeting, up to you. Then we have a closed session. Any other discussion, questions, before we adjourn for the pre-meeting? Yes?
When do we bring new business items? Like was it this one, or can I bring our item now?
If you have some new business, what you could do is we have a spot. We'll bring the sheet in here for you to sign. If it's pertaining to the agenda, there's a place to speak. If it's not on the agenda, it'd be under item 16. So if, oh, you did already? Okay, perfect. So that would be under item 16. Thank you. And then we have some other people here in the audience, too, so if they want to speak on any of the bills that are introduced, then we will have item 10. Do we have anyone signed up?
No, this will be, this is, and one will be another topic.
Okay. As of yet, we don't have anyone signed up to speak on the bills. I know we do have some representatives from some of our organizations that are on some specific bills, so you're certainly welcome to, or if there's questions, we could take it up that way as well. So we appreciate all of you being here. With that, I will call this meeting adjourned for the pre-meeting, and we will begin, let's see, it's 5:53, so we'll start the council meeting at 6:00, so we have a few minutes before we start. Thank you. Welcome, everyone. Welcome, everyone. Before we start the meeting tonight, we will have a prayer led by Councilman Schreiber, Before we start the meeting tonight, we will have a prayer led by Councilman Schreiber, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Dear Lord, in this season of light, make us instruments of your peace. Dear Lord, in this season of light, make us instruments of your peace. Let us sow love where there is hatred, where there is injury, pardon; Let us sow love where there is hatred, where there is injury, pardon; faith where there is doubt, where there is despair, hope; faith where there is doubt, where there is despair, hope; light where there is darkness, where there is sadness, joy. light where there is darkness, where there is sadness, joy. Grant that we may seek not to be consoled, but to console; Grant that we may seek not to be consoled, but to console; to understand if we are not understood; to love even if we are not loved. to understand if we are not understood; to love even if we are not loved. Dear Lord, it is in giving that we receive, Dear Lord, it is in giving that we receive, as you have given all mankind your divine Son. as you have given all mankind your divine Son. In our dying and in our belief in you, we shall be born to eternal life. Amen. In our dying and in our belief in you, we shall be born to eternal life. Amen.
Amen. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. I will now call the Monday, December 5th, 2022 City Council Meeting to Order. Welcome, everyone. I will now call the Monday, December 5th, 2022 City Council Meeting to Order. Mrs. Donaldson, roll call, please. Mrs. Donaldson, roll call, please.
Deacon. Deacon. Fitzwater. Fitzwater.
Present. Present.
Hensley. Hensley.
Present. Present.
Kimna. Kimna.
Here. Here.
Lester. Lester.
Here. Here.
Schreiber. Schreiber.
Present. Present.
Spencer. Spencer.
Here. Here.
Spicer. Spicer.
Present. Present.
Ward. Ward.
Here. Here.
Wiseman. Wiseman.
Present. Present.
You can also join our meeting virtually by WebEx, and there's a call-in participation number. You can also join our meeting virtually by WebEx, and there's a call-in participation number. Those information is available at JeffersonCityMo.gov on our agenda. Those information is available at JeffersonCityMo.gov on our agenda. Item 3, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda. Item 3, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
Second. Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Any opposed? Motion passes. We'll start with a very special recognition. Item 4, miscellaneous agenda items. We'll start with a very special recognition. Item 4, miscellaneous agenda items. We have the Kevin Meinhardt Award presentation to Mary Shans, We have the Kevin Meinhardt Award presentation to Mary Shans, and I would like to invite Gail Strope to the podium, and I would like to invite Gail Strope to the podium, and also invite Mary Shans and members of the Kevin Meinhardt family to the podium. and also invite Mary Shans and members of the Kevin Meinhardt family to the podium. Welcome. And Gail will give us a summary. Welcome. And Gail will give us a summary.
Okay, thank you so much. I'm very pleased this evening to be able to Okay, thank you so much. I'm very pleased this evening to be able to recognize the recipient of the Kevin Meinhardt Memorial Award for Distinguished Public Service. recognize the recipient of the Kevin Meinhardt Memorial Award for Distinguished Public Service. Okay, so Kevin served on the Jefferson City Board of Adjustment from 1997 until 2012. Okay, so Kevin served on the Jefferson City Board of Adjustment from 1997 until 2012. He, Kevin demonstrated during his lifetime his commitment to public service He, Kevin demonstrated during his lifetime his commitment to public service and continually represented the highest standards in ethics and professionalism. and continually represented the highest standards in ethics and professionalism. The employees of the City of Jefferson, the mayor, and the city council The employees of the City of Jefferson, the mayor, and the city council expressed their gratitude for the example that Mr. Meinhardt set, expressed their gratitude for the example that Mr. Meinhardt set, and thus, the Kevin Meinhardt Memorial Award for Distinguished Public Service was born. and thus, the Kevin Meinhardt Memorial Award for Distinguished Public Service was born. So nominations for recipients can be submitted by any member of any board, commission, or committee, So nominations for recipients can be submitted by any member of any board, commission, or committee, including any staff liaison or city council member. including any staff liaison or city council member. And the candidate selected displays public service devotion, excellence, and professionalism, And the candidate selected displays public service devotion, excellence, and professionalism, outstanding enthusiasm, and reflects the highest ideals of citizenship in their conduct. outstanding enthusiasm, and reflects the highest ideals of citizenship in their conduct. So I'm pleased this evening to introduce to you Mary Shans. So I'm pleased this evening to introduce to you Mary Shans. And I would like to tell you a little bit about Mary and read some comments from her nomination form. And I would like to tell you a little bit about Mary and read some comments from her nomination form. So Mary has served on the Historic Preservation Commission, So Mary has served on the Historic Preservation Commission, or she did serve on the Historic Preservation Commission for eight years, or she did serve on the Historic Preservation Commission for eight years, from June of 2013 through June of 2021. from June of 2013 through June of 2021. During that time, she chaired the commission from January 19th to December 2020 During that time, she chaired the commission from January 19th to December 2020 with openness, fairness, and professionalism through difficult issues, with openness, fairness, and professionalism through difficult issues, including removal of the monument gifted by the United Daughters of the Confederacy. including removal of the monument gifted by the United Daughters of the Confederacy. She's also currently serving on the Parks and Recreation Commission, She's also currently serving on the Parks and Recreation Commission, which she's been serving since June of 2021, which she's been serving since June of 2021, and she's currently serving as the co-chair of the Park Resources and Planning Committee. and she's currently serving as the co-chair of the Park Resources and Planning Committee. Besides actively volunteering on city commissions, Besides actively volunteering on city commissions, Mary is a court-appointed special advocate, or CASA, volunteer, Mary is a court-appointed special advocate, or CASA, volunteer, and a board member of the River City Habitat for Humanity and Jefferson City Hands Together. and a board member of the River City Habitat for Humanity and Jefferson City Hands Together. She also reads to record audiobooks for the blind at the Wolfner State Library She also reads to record audiobooks for the blind at the Wolfner State Library and volunteers to help with the conduct of elections or poll workers. and volunteers to help with the conduct of elections or poll workers. So it's for these and many other reasons that Mary's been selected So it's for these and many other reasons that Mary's been selected as the 2022 recipient of the Kevin Meinhardt Memorial Award for Distinguished Public Service. as the 2022 recipient of the Kevin Meinhardt Memorial Award for Distinguished Public Service. So... So...
Congratulations, Mary. Congratulations, Mary. And I have a special plaque that we will present to you, And I have a special plaque that we will present to you, and we'll have you say a few words. and we'll have you say a few words. And I also want to recognize the Meinhardt family. We'll invite them to say a few words as well. And I also want to recognize the Meinhardt family. We'll invite them to say a few words as well. And then we also have online, I believe, oh, good, we have Cindy Meinhardt And then we also have online, I believe, oh, good, we have Cindy Meinhardt and Molly as well, online on our WebEx, listening in and participating in our meeting. and Molly as well, online on our WebEx, listening in and participating in our meeting. So maybe we'll start with the Meinhardt family to tell us a little bit about the special... So maybe we'll start with the Meinhardt family to tell us a little bit about the special... I know the continuation of having this award every year means a lot to the city, I know the continuation of having this award every year means a lot to the city, and we appreciate your family and dedication. and we appreciate your family and dedication. You really represent the heart of service for everyone who serves on our boards and commissions. You really represent the heart of service for everyone who serves on our boards and commissions.
Thank you. I want to congratulate Mary for the honor, Thank you. I want to congratulate Mary for the honor, and just want to express our appreciation to the city and just want to express our appreciation to the city to continue to honor Kevin's memory with this award. Thank you. to continue to honor Kevin's memory with this award. Thank you.
You're welcome. We appreciate that very much, and thank you for being here. You're welcome. We appreciate that very much, and thank you for being here. And Mary, if you'd like to say a few words as well. And Mary, if you'd like to say a few words as well.
Well, I just wanted to say thank you very much. It really is an honor. Well, I just wanted to say thank you very much. It really is an honor. I enjoy very much serving as a volunteer, both on city things I enjoy very much serving as a volunteer, both on city things and in the nonprofit world here in Jefferson City. and in the nonprofit world here in Jefferson City. I wish more of our citizens would participate, I wish more of our citizens would participate, because there's lots of opportunities for input, because there's lots of opportunities for input, oversight, and activities with the city. oversight, and activities with the city. I think it's an important thing, I think it's an important thing, and I know I've personally enjoyed it very much. and I know I've personally enjoyed it very much. Thank you very much for this honor. Thank you very much for this honor.
You're welcome, Mary. You've served the city very well in different capacities, You're welcome, Mary. You've served the city very well in different capacities, on different boards and commissions, like Gail mentioned, on different boards and commissions, like Gail mentioned, and you're also very visible at community events. and you're also very visible at community events. So you not only represent in meetings, you represent in the community, too. So you not only represent in meetings, you represent in the community, too. And I know that when Councilman Lester nominated you, And I know that when Councilman Lester nominated you, there was a long list of things there was a long list of things that even in addition to what was read, that even in addition to what was read, that you have been involved and engaged in, that you have been involved and engaged in, and we certainly appreciate it. and we certainly appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
And we'll definitely do a photo with the award presentation, And we'll definitely do a photo with the award presentation, but I'll open it up but I'll open it up if council has anything they would like to say, if council has anything they would like to say, or Councilman Lester, who made the nomination. or Councilman Lester, who made the nomination.
Just well-deserved. Just well-deserved. Mary was one of the first persons that I ever met in Jefferson City. Mary was one of the first persons that I ever met in Jefferson City. Actually, a decade before I moved here, I met Mary, because I came here from Oklahoma, Actually, a decade before I moved here, I met Mary, because I came here from Oklahoma, trying to learn about Missouri's home care system. trying to learn about Missouri's home care system. And she was one of the persons I interviewed, trying to learn, right on High Street. And she was one of the persons I interviewed, trying to learn, right on High Street. Anyway, congratulations, well-deserved. Anyway, congratulations, well-deserved.
Thanks, Mike. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you. Thank you. We're also glad that we have Cindy and Molly online joining us. We're also glad that we have Cindy and Molly online joining us. Thank you all for being here, and that means a lot that you could join us virtually. Thank you all for being here, and that means a lot that you could join us virtually. And you're certainly welcome if you have anything you want to add, And you're certainly welcome if you have anything you want to add, or if you have anyone else in the audience that you'd like to invite up for a photo. or if you have anyone else in the audience that you'd like to invite up for a photo. We can do that, or we can... We can do that, or we can...
I have my niece here, Galen Carver. I have my niece here, Galen Carver.
Welcome, Galen. Yes, come on up. Welcome, Galen. Yes, come on up. And those of us in the city are very familiar with Galen as well, And those of us in the city are very familiar with Galen as well, so we're happy to have you here also, so welcome. so we're happy to have you here also, so welcome. Any other comments before we take some photo opportunities? Any other comments before we take some photo opportunities? All right, well, with that, I would like to offer congratulations, All right, well, with that, I would like to offer congratulations, and this plaque reads, "The Kevin Meinhardt Memorial..." Oh, I'm sorry. and this plaque reads, "The Kevin Meinhardt Memorial..." Oh, I'm sorry. Molly, yes, welcome, Molly. Molly, yes, welcome, Molly.
Hi, this is Molly Hoskins, and I apologize, I've lost my voice. Hi, this is Molly Hoskins, and I apologize, I've lost my voice. I just wanted to say congratulations, Mary. I just wanted to say congratulations, Mary.
Thank you, Molly. Thank you, Molly.
And thank you for your service. And thank you for your service.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Molly. We appreciate those comments, Thank you, Molly. We appreciate those comments, and we know that it's important for your family to carry on this tradition, and we know that it's important for your family to carry on this tradition, and sincerely, on behalf of the mayor and council, we thank you and Cindy and your entire family, and sincerely, on behalf of the mayor and council, we thank you and Cindy and your entire family, Bob, Sean, and Aura as well from your family. Bob, Sean, and Aura as well from your family. We appreciate everybody's continued dedication to doing this award We appreciate everybody's continued dedication to doing this award and awarding the exemplary service of our board and commission members each year and awarding the exemplary service of our board and commission members each year in honor of Kevin's memory. in honor of Kevin's memory. Mrs. Strope. Mrs. Strope.
Mary, if I can, I'd just like to mention who each of the members of the Meinhardt family are. Mary, if I can, I'd just like to mention who each of the members of the Meinhardt family are.
Sure. Sure.
So online, Cindy Meinhardt is Kevin's wife, Molly is his daughter, So online, Cindy Meinhardt is Kevin's wife, Molly is his daughter, Bob is his brother, and Sean, who's in the audience, is his nephew, is Bob's son. Bob is his brother, and Sean, who's in the audience, is his nephew, is Bob's son.
Wonderful. We appreciate your family, all of you, and your dedication Wonderful. We appreciate your family, all of you, and your dedication in keeping his memory alive and going. in keeping his memory alive and going. So this award, and it has a city coin on it, and it says, So this award, and it has a city coin on it, and it says, "The Kevin Meinhardt Memorial Award for Distinguished Public Service, "The Kevin Meinhardt Memorial Award for Distinguished Public Service, presented to Mary Shans in grateful appreciation of your volunteer service presented to Mary Shans in grateful appreciation of your volunteer service to the City of Jefferson 2022." to the City of Jefferson 2022." So if you would like, you could all come forward and all present the award, So if you would like, you could all come forward and all present the award, and Gail will be part of it, so we can have someone else take the picture, maybe Sunny, maybe, or... and Gail will be part of it, so we can have someone else take the picture, maybe Sunny, maybe, or... Or Ryan? Or Ryan?
Ryan. Ryan.
So... So... And I'll use that as a reminder that we're always accepting board and commission volunteers. So if you haven't filled out a volunteer profile form, you can do that online, or we have hard copy out in the hallway. And we always enjoy those who take the time to serve on our boards and commissions, so thank you for that. Item 5, public hearings. Item A, Resolution 202238.
A resolution of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, approving the special exception use permit to operate an asphalt oil terminal with outdoor operations and storage for property addressed as 2619 North Shamrock Road.
Mr. Sanders.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The property is located on the southeast corner of Sturzer and Shamrock Road, out in the east part of the city. The property there is outlined in blue. All the property around it actually is the same zoning, the light industrial M1 zoning. The close-up of the property, as the clerk mentioned, is to issue a special exception. They've applied for a special exception. Outdoor storage operations and storage facilities are permitted in M1, but only with a special exception. So the applicant has requested that the, basically, the north half of this property here, about 15 acres, a little bit less, be considered to allow that outdoor storage and transfer and operations, which would be part of an asphalt oil transfer facility. The part of the property I'm talking about is there in green. The applicant is Capital Land Investments. You can see by the graphic, there is a rail spur planned, and Cole County is in the process of creating, actually, they've applied for, they have received a grant, getting ahead of myself, going back, for a transload facility. Part of that facility, the north part, actually would be an oil terminal that either tank cars off the railroad or truck tanks can come in and leave oil in a storage facility that can be used later by the applicant. There are some design site guidelines that are in the plan, 100-foot buffer between the facility and Sturzer Road. There's a creek along Shamrock Road, and they'll be buffering along that and keeping the existing creek that runs down Shamrock. This is been referred to the city council by the Planning and Zoning Commission with unanimous vote to recommend approval. There is a consultant for the applicant here, and I'd be glad to answer any questions, too.
Thank you. Any questions? All right, at this time, we will open the public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to speak for Resolution 202238? Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Paul Sampson. I'm with Central Missouri Professional Services, and I am representing Capital Land Investments, who is the owner of the property. As Mr. Sanders said, the proposed development is for an asphalt oil storage facility. Basically, the plan is to utilize the planned Cole County transload facility with the extension of the rail spur from Alpla into the Algoa Quarry area. That's a project that we've also been working on with the county for the last year or so. They've acquired some grant funds in order to do that, and basically, the county side of it would provide locations for industries in the area who are not on a rail spur to be able to utilize rail service and provide that additional... who are not on a rail spur to be able to utilize rail service and provide that additional mode of transportation for those industries. So the north part of the property will continue to be owned by Capital Land Investments. They'll bring asphalt oil in on rail cars, being able to buy that in bulk, transfer it into their storage tanks that'll be located on the site, and then transfer it from those tanks into over-the-road trucks that can then be used to distribute to their asphalt plant facilities throughout the state. So it's a really good economic development project. As we've gone through the site design on the rail or on the oil terminal itself, we do have some industrial neighbors around. Scholastic is located just to the north and Modern Litho as well. So we've tried to design the site in such a way to minimize any noise or visual impacts to those industries. And we have met with Scholastic and they seem to be pretty happy with the site, so with that, I would answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, thank you for your testimony.
Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak on Resolution 2238? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing portion and I'll ask for a motion to approve Resolution 2238.
Second.
Any discussion or deliberation? Roll call, please.
Deegan.
Aye.
Fitzwater.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Kimna.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Spencer.
Aye.
Spicer.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Item B, we have bill pending 2278.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri approving a PUD plan amendment for property located at 1716 Four Seasons Drive.
Mr. Sanders.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a property that was damaged in the tornado very severely. We thought it was beyond repair. It is located right there on the corner of Flora and Four Seasons. And the applicant is applying for an amendment to their PUD plan, basically to change the use. The use that is not permitted currently is a gymnasium. So in addition to wanting to increase the ceiling height of the building by increasing the walls by 10 feet, they're also applying for changes of the use to allow gymnasium along with all other C1 zoning. So basically allowing C1, which is our neighborhood commercial, as the underlying zoning and also for signage and lighting. There really is no site design issues to be reviewed. It's basically going to be the same as it is. Of course, it's going to be maintained and freshened up due to the tornado damage in the past. Parking is sufficient. There's no stormwater issues or negative traffic impacts or anything like that. I'd be glad to answer any additional questions and the applicant is here. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? All right, we will open the public hearing process for 202278. Is there anyone that would like to speak on the bill? Okay, seeing none, we will close the public hearing portion and take up bill pending 2278. Any further discussion or deliberation? Roll call, please.
Fitzwater.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Kimna.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Schreiber. Spencer.
Aye.
Spicer.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Deegan.
Aye.
Bill passes and glad to see this. I know that as we look at the tornado, even though it seems like it's been a while, there's still the recovery process and this is part of moving through that and something that's needed in the community, so certainly appreciate that. Item six, we have no appointments this evening. Item seven, presentations from staff consultants invited guests, nothing this evening. Item eight, announcements. We have our four standing committee meeting calendar at JeffersonCityMo.gov. We'll run through each of the committees administration.
Our next meeting is Wednesday across the hall, 7:30 a.m.
Thank you. And finance.
No announcements tonight, thanks.
Okay. Public safety.
No announcements tonight, Madam Mayor.
All right, and public works and planning.
Yes, we'll be meeting on Thursday, December 8th at 7:30. Would just give the committee and council a heads up. One of the agenda items will be the Jefferson Street parking deck. We would like to move that along if the committee's ready. I mean, we heard it the other night, so that'll be one of the agenda items Thursday morning.
Great, thank you for the preview. And I will go over my announcements. I might have a few photos that we can put up on the screen as well. Starting with, we had a successful Christmas parade and living windows, so we'll touch on the parade a little bit more here momentarily. But we'll start with the polar plunge for Special Olympics. And look there, who knew that we had Hans and Franz on the Jefferson City Fire Department? So Chief Matt Hans or Franz or both, Schofield, along with Noah, James Noah, who, firefighter, who is the, I'm not sure which was which. Any comment? No comment? So, and those of you who say that that might have been cheating, I heard that word over there, that I guess you could say it probably wasn't. No comment. Although it was a lot more padding, or no, muscles, never mind. But anyway, everybody else that was on there too, Grace did this for the first time, she's there with her family, Grace Theroff did the plunge for the first time, as did Nicole for the first time, and Larry Lenthicum, who, those all were newbies and I believe they will all be back again. And then we have all of our veterans that did it. Actually, Chief Hoy, that was his first time to do it too. So, yes, we appreciate everybody doing that. I will say on the polar plunge, let's see here, and I did bring the bucket for Wheeler. I'm still taking donations. The goal is $10,000. We are at 9,892. I have $35 cash in here, so we're at 9,927. So we are $73 away from hitting $10,000 for Special Olympics, so I am determined to get that final 73. You can donate here or online at Special Olympics Missouri. I'll be sure to share another link, I shared that several times on social media, so we just think it's pretty cool that we can have an event like that and raise $10,000 for Special Olympics. So I do have to say in all seriousness, thank you, Chief Schofield, for doing that and actually running through that freezing cold. It was about the coldest night we've had, I think, so far, for sure. We had Jefferson City Police Department as well, Adam Lukinoff went through, so although I didn't see you through there, Chief, just saying. Yeah, we'll work on your calendar already for next year, okay? So we'll just throw that out there. But I know that also we put out there for you, Chief, because I just put you on the spot at the last council meeting and you said you would do it for $1,000 and you raised, yeah, I believe you were pretty close to the $3,000. I will say that my team was in the lead and I do want to throw that out there because it is a friendly competition between city and county. So Team City was 4,153 and Wheeler's Warriors were only 3,639. So I think for the first time, he let me win for real this time. But Gracie's groupies, Gracie Theroff did 2,100 for her first time. So if you do want to give, yeah, give to Gracie's team because we put it all together and like I said, we combine all that for our $10,000, so thank you for that. Also is the mayor's tree lighting, that's the next slide up here. And that pictured right there, that is Jennifer Sekanek, my assistant in City Hall, her two children, Blake and Samantha, and they lit the tree, they helped me light it this year and that was just representing city employees in general. We appreciate the work that they do, so wanted to bring city employees into the mix when it came to actually lighting the tree itself. And then here is living windows and that is a photo of the active transportation group. They had people ride a bike, a stationary bike, and as you pedaled, it would power the Christmas tree. So just kind of interesting activity for living windows and they had out on the street area for input, Katrina Williams, in addition to David Bangy. Those two city staff members spent their entire Friday night and even more doing walk audits and then doing living windows with a lot of public engagement. I hope you had a chance to try the bike. And that's a kid doing it, but I did it too and there's another child who did it and there is a picture of me doing it, just for proof that, yeah, there, I got on there and did it too. So it was a lot of fun, but it was cool that we had that public engagement. There's a table behind me and the message board where people could put their input, so that was a way to really get with people to get their input. And you can see here, it says, "We want your input." So I'm proud of city staff for taking the time to get out there and really get input. So I think that's everything, right? Living windows, Christmas parade, the mayor's tree, and a big thanks to Parks and Rec for doing the mayor's tree every year. You really outdo yourself year after year, so Mr. Spalding, please thank the Parks team and staff for putting that tree together. It's just beautiful and fantastic.
They have a lot of fun doing it, so I'll tell them.
Well, you can tell and it's fun for the community. I've been there several times since the lighting. There's always somebody there, families and kids, taking their pictures at the mayor's tree. It's a tradition, so be sure to check that out. We had some council members that were there that night, so we certainly appreciate that. I know I definitely saw Lester and Fitzwater there. I might have missed some of you other ones, but I do appreciate our engagement with that and David Bangy's idea to have a bike ride, community ride, from City Hall around the city to the mayor's tree. So we actually literally rode in on a bike, so exciting times for the city and we appreciate that. Couple other announcements, filing starts tomorrow for city offices. It's December 6th through the 27th, so we have five wards that are up, three for reelection and two open seats and mayor. And then there's also some other items, but 6th through the 27th is filing. Lastly, I want to announce on the Capitol Avenue, we have the call for interested parties out until December 13th, so reminder for that, if you're interested, that there's just a couple weeks left and until December 22nd for the three properties on Capitol Avenue that we own. The phone number to call if you are interested is LeAnn Corrigan at the city and her number is 573-634-6325. For the three properties we own, you will see a sign in the yard of Capitol Avenue with a QR code and LeAnn's phone number identifying what those three properties are. There was already a showing for interested parties. The reason we don't have a sign in those yards is we don't actually own those and are unable to actually post a sign, but those are soon, of course, to be part of this process. So just a reminder that those are out. There's also input currently being gathered for the parking garage, so just reminder for the public for those items.
Hey, Mary.
Yes.
We're just going to acknowledge Councilman Kimna was also at the tree lighting, so...
Oh, thank you. Thank you for being there.
Part of the program.
Wonderful, thank you. Sorry I missed you, I must have gone by on the bike too fast. We had quite a crowd, so thank you for being there as well. Any other council announcements? Anything going on? Councilman Kimna.
I was just going to mention, I believe this Sunday is the first ever Porch Fest, Festmas, on Forest Hill from 4:00 to 7:00.
Festmas, awesome.
Not to be confused with Festivus.
No, for the rest of us.
Awesome. So with Festmas, I have to ask Councilman Hensley, are you playing?
I am unavailable this Sunday, but I'm sure it'll be a lot of fun.
Great.
Encourage everyone to go if they can.
And Forest Hill, you said? Okay, we will look forward to that. It's a great idea to do that in December. Item nine, Lincoln University Student Representative update, and we have Octavia with us. Welcome.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor Turgeon. Good evening, Councilmen, and good evening, guests. I would first like to start off by saying I had a really great time at the Christmas parade this past weekend. I was given the opportunity to co-anchor along with Ms. Linda McAney for the News Tribune, so I would like to say thank you, Mayor Turgeon, Councilman Wiseman, and the News Tribune for that opportunity. We have a lot of great things at Lincoln University. We are looking forward to concluding our semester. And first, I would like to give a brief recap of last week. On Friday, December 2nd, the LU Annual Christmas Concert was held in Mitchell Auditorium at Richardson Fine Arts Center. On Saturday, December 3rd, several Lincoln University organizations, such as the Marching Musical Storm and Mr. and Ms. Lincoln University of Missouri, participated in the 83rd Annual Jefferson City J.C.'s Christmas Parade. Lincoln University would like to invite everyone to the Holiday Extravaganza on tomorrow, Tuesday, December 6th, from 6:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. on the Quad, 818 Chestnut Street, Jefferson City, Missouri 65101. The Holiday Extravaganza will feature a tree lighting ceremony, Santa's workshop, performances by the Lincoln University Choir, as well as a special visit from Santa. Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity Incorporated is hosting a coat drive. They are collecting new or gently used coats of all sizes now through January 23rd to, now through January 23rd, 2023, for distribution on January 25th, 2023. Collection sites are Cool Running Yardies at 226 East Dunkland Street, Jefferson City, Missouri, and Dawson Learning Center, Dawson Hall, 711 Lee Drive, Jefferson City, Missouri. On Friday, December 16th, the ROTC Fall Commissioning Ceremony, marking the transformation of ROTC cadets to second lieutenants in the United States Army, will be held from 10:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. On Friday, December 16th, the School of Nursing Penning Ceremony, which is an initiation of individuals into the profession of nursing, will take place from 7:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. And lastly, Lincoln University's winter break will begin on Monday, December 19th, and classes will resume on January 17th, 2023. Thank you, and that concludes my announcements for this evening.
Thank you, Octavia. And then for tomorrow night on Tuesday, the tree lighting, what time did you say that was, again?
That will begin at 6:00 p.m.
6:00 p.m. on the Quad.
Yes, ma'am.
Wonderful.
Yes, Madam Mayor.
And I guess that's the first time that I'm aware that they've done that this year, so...
Yes, ma'am, I believe it's something new, I believe.
Wonderful.
I think it's going to be a great experience.
Great, well, I hope to see some of us out there. Councilwoman Wiseman.
Thank you. I just want to thank you again for co-anchoring for Saturday for the Christmas parade. We do appreciate that. On behalf of the J.C.'s, thank you very much. I still get to be a member of that organization and get to actually thank you, so, thank you. That's, so this year, we actually did get to stream that on the News Tribune YouTube page, and so that was a new venue for us and I really do appreciate that.
Thank you, Councilman Wiseman.
You did an outstanding job, so for those that want to view it, I know it's always a tradition, people like to watch the parade after the fact, so they can go on News Tribune, on their Facebook page, there's a link to their YouTube page where the video is distributed, and we certainly appreciate News Tribune for doing that. But you did a fantastic job. I might have thrown your name out there when they were looking at that and you were the one that came to mind and I think it's wonderful to represent the city and represent Lincoln University and you're very well spoken and you did just a fantastic job, so...
Thank you, Mayor Turgeon.
You're welcome. Thank you, Octavia. Item 11, consent agendas, there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Bill's introduced, 202282.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor and clerk to execute a grand amendment between the City of Jefferson and the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for the purpose of an apron maintenance project for the Jefferson City Memorial Airport.
Mr. Marash.
Thank you. As clerk indicated, this is grand agreement with MoDOT and basically to extend the time so we could finish up our paperwork on that.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion? All right, 202283.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri designating the Lafayette Street and the Historic Foot District as a Historic Legacy District and identifying the boundaries of the Lafayette Street and the Historic Foot District Historic Legacy District.
Mrs. Senzi.
Thank you. A month ago, or a couple months ago, the city council created a tool to establish Historic Legacy Districts, which allow the city to recognize resources that no longer exist. The first application that we received for a Historic Legacy District is for designating the Lafayette Street and Historic Foot Area as a Historic Legacy District. The Lafayette Street and the Foot District of the City of Jefferson possesses a rich historic and social value for the City of Jefferson and its people and larger community in the nation. From the early 1900s to the 1960s, Lafayette Street and the Foot District were the heart of the Black community. Lafayette Street was a vibrant business center and was home to numerous Black-owned businesses and residents, including a nightclub, restaurants, a multi-story hotel, churches, schools, grocery stores, and social clubs. Lafayette Street and the Foot District was a place for the Black community to work, dine, and socialize and was a destination for both Black and white visitors. It was widely accepted as the cultural heart of the Black community. This area was also listed in the Negro Motorist Green Book for nearly 30 years. A guide called the Negro Motorist Green Book provided African-Americans with advice on safe places to eat and sleep and obtain various services when they traveled throughout the Jim Crow area, United States. The Historic Legacy District is a geographical area of historical and cultural significance for which most or all of the physical attributes relevant to the historical or cultural period of significance no longer exist. The Lafayette Street and Historic Foot District were demolished during urban renewal. The Federal Housing Act of 1949 provided funding and the eventual, and the eventual... and the eventual unbuildable land for new urban renewal projects. This urban renewal program was concerned not only with sore spots that blight produced, but also with protecting the community as a whole against the threat of blight. Urban renewal was supposed to redevelop areas that had fallen into disrepair. Urban renewal projects were attractive for cities because federal funding provided the bulk of the budget. Unfortunately, many projects took place in the areas that had suffered from long-time disinvestment, often African-American area neighborhoods. In Jefferson City, the institutional support from Lincoln University was somewhat unusual for this, for the urban renewal, because Campus View Urban Renewal Project. The federally funded Campus View Urban Renewal Project began to be worked on in approximately 1959. The project was not uniformly popular. It did demolish most of the Lafayette and Foot Historic District, and the relocation for its residents did not run smoothly. The application that was provided for the Lafayette Street and Historic Foot Legacy District includes, and I have a map up on the screen for everybody, includes the 400, 500, and 600 blocks of Lafayette Street, and also the corner of East Dunkland Street is currently 708 Lafayette Street, but at the time that a resource was existing, it was actually on Dunkland and facing Dunkland. So that's why the boundaries are drawn in the way they are. It is a staff recommendation to approve the Historic Legacy District. This originally started out in the Historic Preservation Code Revision Committee, and then was also approved by the Historic Preservation Commission for approval. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Mrs. Senzi? Councilman Spencer?
Yes, we're talking with Mr. Glover Brown today. He just wanted to express his appreciation due to extenuating health issues. He wasn't able to make it tonight. But he wanted to sincerely thank city staff, Law Department, Planning and Protective Services for bringing this proposal, and especially Councilman Ward for her leadership in that as well. And if you didn't get a chance to read the background information, as far, there's some really good historical aspects that are quite interesting. And I think our community owes a lot to Mr. Brown and his family for bringing this opportunity to the city. And again, I hope his health improves, and our prayers are with him this evening, so. I just wanted to share that on his behalf.
Thank you for sharing that, Councilman Spencer. Any other comments? Was there an interest to take this up tonight? I forgot to ask Councilwoman Ward.
I didn't hear from Mr. Glover, but due to, last time I spoke to him, which was two weeks ago, he was doing better. I didn't hear from him before now, but if the rest of the council doesn't have a problem with suspending the rules, I would make that motion to do so.
Okay, and then he could certainly always come to a future meeting if he wanted to. That would always be an open invitation, and he typically attends regularly, so, or used to, so.
I'd second that.
Okay, so we've had a request. Mr. Moulman?
I'm sorry, this is our first one. Is there a hearing attached to this that's scheduled for? I don't recall.
No, the hearing's at the Historic Preservation Commission.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right.
Good, good call there. Okay. So we've had a request to suspend the rules. Hearing, no objections. We'll take up 22-83.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, designating the Lafayette Street and the Historic Foot District as a Historic Legacy District and identifying the boundaries of the Lafayette Street and Historic Foot District Historic Legacy District.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Hensley.
Aye.
Kemna.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Spencer.
Aye.
Spicer.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Deacon.
Aye.
Fitzwater.
Aye.
Bill passes, and thank you again, Councilwoman Ward, for your work with that and the Historic Preservation, and Mrs. Senzi, Mr. Sanders.
Yes, I would like to ask Ms. Senzi to just briefly mention how many of these there are in the United States.
I believe this is the only one.
That's my understanding, too. So this is a big deal.
Wow.
This is, and I would like to, again, thank you for all your work, your staff's work. This has been over a year in the making. I think we've met monthly for 15 months now in order to create a tool, and thank you to my colleagues for passing that, and now to Mr. Glover for submitting this application, and Historic Preservation Commission also for, during the hearing, working on the boundaries. I know there was some tweaking to do because, you know, addresses did change. And then we also were stalled a little bit because of the legal descriptions through the law department. But yes, this is a big deal, and thank you guys for supporting it. Hopefully, we'll have more in our city where we've lost historic structures and culture. Again, this is to, you know, represent the history that, you know, we don't have the structures any longer. So there's no zoning or permits attached to this district, so. Kudos, everyone.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ward, and this is certainly only the beginning. It's great to be one of a kind, the first of its kind in the country for this type of designation, to have that example here in the capital city. I think definitely makes sense to be a leader in something like this. And it's also just the beginning in telling the story, which is part of the purpose of having this district. So we look forward to that story being told and shared, and we also look forward to having Glover here when he's up to it in the future for maybe a future meeting for a recognition. I'm sure he would like that, or whatever way they would see fit to recognize that district as well. And maybe Councilman Spencer could pass that along that it passed tonight. I'm sure that would make him pretty happy, and.
He said he would be watching it.
Oh, wonderful. Fantastic. Well, thanks to everyone who worked so hard on this, and we will definitely keep that legacy going. 2022-84.
An ordinance approving a plan for an industrial development project for Jefferson City Medical Group, authorizing the City of Jefferson, Missouri to issue its taxable industrial development revenue bonds, JCMG Real Property Project Series 2022, and a principal amount not to exceed $15,700,000, and its taxable industrial development revenue bonds, JCMG Personal Property Project Series 2022, and a principal amount not to exceed $2,100,000 to finance the costs of such project, authorizing and approving certain documents and authorizing certain other actions in connection with issuance of the bonds.
Mr. Moulman?
Thank you. This ordinance would approve, this bill would approve the issuance of two bonds under Chapter 100, the Industrial Development Revenue Bond Statutes. The first bond is in the amount of $15,700,000 to cover real estate involved in this project for JCMG, and the second bond in the amount of $2,100,000 to cover personal property that's being purchased in connection with this project as well by JCMG. The effect of these bonds would to, would be to provide tax payment for a period of 10 years to JCMG. In the first five years, it would be 75% of real property taxes, and in the second five-year period, the tax payment would reduce down to 50% for a total of 10 years. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion? All right, thank you. We also appreciate having representatives here from JCMG tonight as well as our Regional Economic Partnership Group, so thank you all for being here, too. 2022-85.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, finding that the areas described as the 611 Jefferson Redevelopment Area, 320 Miller Redevelopment Area, and the 1226 Adams Redevelopment Area are each a blighted areas defined in Chapter 353 of the Revised Statutes of Missouri as amended, and that the redevelopment of such areas is necessary and in the public interest. Approving development plans for such areas, approving the exercise of the power of eminent domain, and providing further authority.
Mr. Moulman?
Thank you. This bill would approve three development plans for 611 Jefferson, 320 Miller, and 1226 Adams. Approval of these plans is a prerequisite to the exercise of eminent domain under Chapter 353 of Missouri statutes. The bill additionally approves each of these redevelopment areas as blighted areas, as documented in the blighting study attached to each of the redevelopment plans. These three properties, they make up the three properties that are currently owned by Barbara Buscher that are outside the Capitol Avenue area, but all three properties have been previously declared dangerous and are prime for acquisition and searching for private redevelopment opportunities to get the properties back into a productive state and into, on the tax rolls. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? I have a couple comments. I do appreciate staff's work on this. I think it's a great example of Chapter 353 and what can be done with it, so thank you for working on this. And as you said, those are all three owned by Barbara Buscher, and it's my understanding these are the final three properties that are owned by her that the city has been working on acquiring, correct?
Yes, between these three properties and the Capitol Avenue, the city has a plan for acquisition of all real estate owned by Ms. Buscher in the city.
So I almost want you to repeat that. A plan for all properties owned or owned by Barbara Buscher in the city. So she will no longer own property after this bill passes, or after, well, after the process is completed, after the 353?
Yeah, we still have to go through the eminent domain process through the courts. And that's true for these properties and the properties up on Capitol Avenue, most of them.
Thank you. I do want to just take a moment to show appreciation for council for moving this forward. I know that in the past, also the past council that started this, it's amazing over the last eight years to think that we have acquired now or in this process that this will open the door for acquiring all of her properties, and that she will no longer have any. And this is to the tune of 37 properties?
That's a rough count, upper 30s of total properties.
Upper 30s. Upper 30s. So I just have to take a moment because that is a really big deal. So that's, that should be a headline after this next council meeting. I will be joining the next council meeting virtually, and I really wish I was going to be here in person because that is quite a milestone to say that we have actually gone through this process with all of her properties. So thank you for allowing me a moment to really, I guess, highlight how important that is. That's been a long time coming, so thank you. Almost makes me want to suspend the rules, but that's okay.
There is a hearing that's necessary for this one.
There will be a hearing at the next meeting, and that gives us another opportunity to remind everyone of how hard the city has worked to acquire those properties, so thank you. Item 13, Bills Pending, Number 80, 2022-80.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, amending Section 15-8 Education Plan of the Personnel Policy Manual.
Mrs. Strope.
Thank you. This ordinance amends the Personnel Policy Manual, specifically the section regarding tuition reimbursement, and it allows the city to directly reimburse student loan providers on behalf of employees who have received student loans for classes that they're taking.
Any questions or discussion? Roll call, please. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Councilman Spencer?
I just had a question. How many of our staff utilize the reimbursement program?
Gosh, I don't know the number right offhand, but if I had to guess, somewhere around 15 at any one given time. Obviously, over time, that number's a lot higher, but.
Thank you.
Any other discussion or questions? Roll call, please.
Kemna.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Schreiber. Spencer.
Aye.
Spicer. Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Deacon.
Aye.
Fitzwater.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Bill passes, 2022-81.
Amending the 2022-2023 Budget by reclassifying the Golf Course Superintendent Position to a Parks Resources Supervisor and a Mechanic Position to a Construction Inspector Position within the Department of Parks and Recreation.
Mr. Spalding.
Thank you, Mayor. This, these reclassifications will allow promoting hiring of a couple of positions of, I feel like, greater areas of need within our maintenance department. We find, you know, challenges of hiring some good employees. We're just trying to find some different ways to go about that. So we estimate the financial impact at $2,700, and it was budgeted in our budget.
Any questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Lester.
Aye.
Schreiber. Spencer.
Aye.
Spicer.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Deacon.
Aye.
Fitzwater.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Kemna.
Aye.
Bill passes. Nothing on the informal. We've taken up the resolution, so Item 16, Presentations from the Gallery on Other Topics, that they will have up to three minutes, and we do have someone signed up this evening, so if you'd like to come to the podium and give us your name, please.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Hashwaseen. I, my family owns a restaurant in town called The Curry and Grill. It's an Indian restaurant on, of Ellis Boulevard. It's a pretty trivial matter I'm bringing to your attention related to city codes, so I apologize wasting your three minutes around this. We all have much greater, bigger things to do. It is related to the City Code 3.2 applicability, within applicability, Item F, prohibited signs, which has an Item 15, advertising flags such as super flag, feather flag, and teardrop flag. Basically, our business spent thousands of dollars to buy marketing material just to learn that there is a city code that does not allow us to put feather flags on the roadside. So I want, I don't know what the proper procedure is around this, but somebody to take a look at it and just what needs to be happening, or help me understand why this code even exists, which is, basically, it is prohibited to have feather flags around the property for basic marketing purposes. So it just seems pretty trivial. I do not understand why other businesses have not come forth just yet, but if somebody can help me explain that, I would appreciate that.
Thank you. Mr. Councilman Deacon?
I sympathize with you. I don't know why you can't have them either. We have the most convoluted, crazy, upside-down sign ordinances you could ever imagine, and I would hope that we could have a planning and zoning that would fix the plant, fix the sign ordinance once and for all. We can put Christmas signs out in our yard, but we can't put political signs in our yard the same size. You can have, well, you can see it. I mean, I could spend all night telling you how crazy the sign is, and it inhibits business. I sympathize with you, and I would hope we could, hope we could change it so we can be business-friendly and not try to stifle someone's sense of dignity. Thank you for coming to bring it to our attention. It has been on a lot of our attention, but no one seems to want to take the bull by the horns, but thank you.
Thank you. It's just a simple feather sign that tells, "Come enjoy great Indian food and have curries." And it is one-of-a-kind Indian restaurant in mid-Missouri, which does welcome, and we do have guests all across from mid-Missouri, from many guests from Columbia, Mobiley, as far as Rola who drive up here, and if they are visiting, if they see signs, it just helps them drive the crowd in and enjoy some good food. So if somebody can take the next steps or guide me to take the next steps, I'll appreciate that.
I think we could, we'll outline what those steps are, but I think we have a hand over here. Councilman Spencer?
I'm going to blow here. Okay. At our last Public Works Committee meeting, we talked about this subject, actually, and I think staff is doing some preliminary background work on that. So what I've been advocating for is for these feather flags to be utilized during business hours of operation. Would that be a hindrance for you? So like, if you would just place your feather flag out there for, during your hours of operation, would that, would that?
I mean, that would be certainly a start, but if it's a 14-foot feather flag, it'll cost me more to have a person go up there, put it, take it down. You know, it's a 14-foot simple flag, but still, you know, if I count, if I'm open 22 calendar days in a month, times 15, or 30 minutes, times $15.
Would that be a hindrance for you? So like, if you would just place your feather flag out there for, during your hours of operation, would that, would that...
I mean, that would be certainly a start, but if it's a 14-foot feather flag, it'll cost me more to have a person go up there, put it, take it down, you know, it's a 14-foot simple flag, but still, you know, if I count, if I'm open 22 calendar days in a month, times 15 or 30 minutes, times $15 an hour, within a year, it just doesn't make sense to even have a flag. I mean, it just, labor cost for no reason.
Yeah, and that might be some of the, you know, the negotiating that has to take place as far as feather flags, the size, and those kinds of things, so. But again, to echo Councilman Deacon's position as well, we want to be business-friendly, we want to be pro-business, and we think it's important for you to be able to advertise your business. So thank you again for coming this evening to share your thoughts with that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And I know in the last couple of years, maybe, I feel like it was two years, but maybe it's been longer, there was a pretty extensive sign overview of the sign ordinance, and a lot of changes were added and made, so there was a process to go through that. So certainly, like Councilman Spencer said, that's being reviewed, but Sonny, or Mr. Sanders, would you like to give a update?
Sure, a quick update. We were not able to get prepared in time for this month's Public Works and Planning Committee meeting. Actually, the gentleman that's working on that helped to assemble some of the data regarding another project for y'all. But at next month's, in January's, Public Work and Planning Meeting, staff plans to start that conversation with the committee and the council. Certainly, I don't think we're going to have a solution or panacea, you know, but we're going to start the dialogue, we'll be ready. Mr. Moulman has ramped up on some of his Supreme Court rulings that occurred last year, and it's just a matter of scheduling and get to the point of getting that on the agenda. So I apologize not getting it on in December, but rather be prepared and do it right in January. So that is one of the items that has been brought up before, and certainly, I would assume would be a topic of conversation for the council.
So those are open public meetings, so it will be, it sounds like, the January Public Works, which is typically the...
Second, Thursday.
Scheduled for January 12th, subject to change, usually 7:30 a.m., tentatively January 12th, so, but check the city's website, JeffersonCityMo.gov to verify that, and then...
I'll get you my contact information, and I'll be sure you're aware.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, thank you for being here. And item 17, any council and staff discussion of presentation topics? Item 18, any new business? Councilman Spencer?
Yes, I would just like to give a thank you to our law enforcement personnel and our dispatchers for their quick response and with the unfortunate double murder, if you will, at one of our local establishments up on High Street. We had a great Living Windows event. Me and my family were there. I felt safe, had excellent presence there with our police officers there, and I'm sure as far as the other activities that were downtown as well with the parade. So please continue to have an open dialogue with public safety, and if there's any tools that you feel that your department needs to curb some of this, we're more than willing to listen. And obviously, that's something that we're not proud of that happens in this community, and I think it's something that a few of us on the council have shared, that we're not going to tolerate it. So again, please share that with your department on a wonderful job of what they did that night.
Thank you, Councilman Spencer. Any other new business? And if there's any interest in giving staff any further direction on 408 Lafayette, it was discussed at the last council meeting, so I know that Mr. Sanders is compiling information and recently sent out an email with some preliminary information, but it will be up to council to make decision on what to do to move forward, so certainly let staff know, I suppose, if there's anything more, Councilman Spencer. So if they wanted to either bring in, if it's to be a park, if they want to bring in parks, if it's going to be public space, or if it's going to be redeveloped, putting it out to the public for a brief period of time, and answering questions of whether it even could be developed with the floodplain issue and what that would do potentially for the city. We wouldn't want to jeopardize any of our flood insurance or things of that nature. So I'll turn it over to Councilman Spencer.
Just a follow-up as well, salary study. Have we received any information on that piece that we was hoping to have as a tool to help guide us in our budget process, but obviously that didn't occur? So just anxious to know any update on where we're at with that.
I do think that it's getting very close. We have had some preliminary discussions and reviews with Evergreen Solutions, and so I'm hoping to honestly receive a final presentation very soon.
Could you define "soon" for us?
Definitely by the end of the month.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Spencer, and I know the ball hasn't really been in our court. From our understanding, it's in theirs, so I definitely appreciate that question. Anything more? Okay.
Just a question on...
Councilman Lester?
On 408 Lafayette, when you put up the map of the floodplain, it looked like half of the building was in the floodplain. Is that true, and does that matter?
That one map is the one that's on MidMO GIS. There's actually another field representing the 500-year floodplain that the whole house is in. So I'm not a floodplain map expert, but part of the building is in the floodplain, and that's really all that matters from the government's eyes, and I would let Matt probably answer this in more details.
Yeah, yeah, if it touches the lot, you would have to review the floodplain status, which all really is about elevation. So you could be in the floodplain. In that case, I did have one of the, Don Fontana, our floodplain administrator, looked that up for me, but basically, that house would need to be elevated to be rehabbed.
And my understanding, there's, they're relooking at the floodplain, floodplain areas, right, in Jefferson City or not?
Yeah, I mean, it's a slow process, but chances are the floodplain will be extended in most cases, just because of, you know, new rainfall data will be added to the model here in the coming years, and it probably will only get more restrictive.
So council may want to think about what the options are if council wants to pursue the possibility of the public potentially purchasing that and what that would look like, and if either there's no interest or there's not interest for that option, then if the building is taken down, then what those options could look at, look like, whether it's a public space or parks or what entities are all involved, so whether it stays or goes and what that may look like. But I know at the last meeting it came up, so just wanted to make sure that the information was communicated. Councilwoman Ward, and then Councilman Spencer?
Question for Mr. Marash regarding your comment about elevating the property in order to rehab it. Would elevating the AC condensing unit on the outside and the furnace to an upper-level HVAC system and not rehabbing the basement, making that unfinished space, would that qualify as elevating?
No, I mean, we did, I mean, this goes back several years, so we were able to find this diagram, actually, but in this case, we did all the finished floors, but that's the right side of the door, basically, you know, what that elevation is. And so that elevation, but then you have floor joists and all the things underneath of it. So we think it's about roughly, in this preliminary look, maybe a foot and a half would need the whole thing elevated, and part of that is, all the utilities in the basement would need to find a home up on that level, electrical, mechanical, plumbing, et cetera. Then the basement actually has to be filled, we believe, like, to the grade of the adjoining property, you know, the site grade, and so more or less you would jack it up and put a new foundation under it. Could be a crawl space, but then it would have to be able to drain out, and if you did all this, you could get a, which is LOMAR on this one, a couple of different acronyms, but this one, I think, takes a LOMAR, so you'd have to plug some utilities, things like that. Anyway, quite a bit of work to do this, but it's not impossible to do. And the LOMAR is actually a letter of map amendment, or letter of map, whatever they are, is revision, excuse me. And so, the, and so what that does is then it takes it out of the floodplain, even though the floodplain touches the lot, like you said, because it's at a certain elevation, it takes it out of the floodplain, so then you can get a bank loan on it, you can, you know, get cheaper floodplain insurance, all those kind of things. So it's a bit of a process, and I didn't do it justice in that snippet, but you can see it's pretty involved, and each one is very specific to the property. Whoever, if somebody wanted to do this, they'd really need to work with us and our building official, so it's, we tag-team with the building official to do this. So when you see new properties, for example, go in, North of Rivers, best example, on the north side of the river, new airport restaurant, for example, all that was taken care of in that design, and so there would be some design professionals needed, so.
Councilman Spencer?
I guess this is a question for the Public Works Chair. Is that something maybe we could add to the agenda for our next meeting to maybe have a little bit more of a discussion on, and maybe come up with a recommendation to the council?
By next, you're talking January? Yeah, because I think we're pretty well set on the agenda for this week, but yeah, we can add it for January.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so if council has any further information they might like, they can let staff know some questions and then get it to you for Public Works.
And just so I'm clear, that's kind of for that general area is what you're asking? Not just that house, because there's several properties there. Is that fair, Sonny?
Okay, so we have a plan to move forward, and the good thing is the public will be aware. There'll be plenty of time, and there is no urgency anyway to act from our understanding, so that we'll get it out in the public process. Thank you. Anything else under new business? Okay, item 19, closed session pursuant to Section 610.021 of the Revised Statutes of Missouri. The chair will entertain a motion to go into closed session to discuss the following: